Pledge of Independence to the flag of the United States of America and consider a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of New Mexico and the seeing symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
I'll have the vacation given by.
Pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings we have received in Eddy County. We are grateful for your presence in our lives and all that we do. We pray that you will continue to watch over our military and first responders and keep them safe. Let us always remember the things we take for granted are the things others are praying for. We ask these things in your most precious name.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning to those who are joining us here in the Commission Chambers. Before we move into the timed agenda, I do have one announcement that I'd like to make. On September 11, 2022, a notice was published regarding a public hearing for an industrial revenue bond ordinance, which would be scheduled for the Commission meeting today. Despite the published notice of intent, the Hayhurst Industrial Revenue Bond Ordinance is expected to be heard at the November 1, 2022 Commission meeting. An updated notice of intent to adopt the ordinance reflecting the new date will be published in the coming days. So thanks. This is something we've been working on. The Commission, we've heard from Al Donkin, we've heard from Chevron, so this is the IRB attorneys getting together and hashing that out. So they weren't quite ready for this meeting today. So they're, November 1 is what they're targeting, so. Public can watch for that published notice of public hearing for that ordinance and we'll put it on that agenda. All right. Timed agenda, are there any public comments? Haven't received any written comments. Are there any comments from the audience this morning? Seeing none, we'll move into the training agenda. First item is approve the Commission meeting minutes for the September 20, 2022 meeting.
Questions on minutes for 2022, September 20th, 2022? Entertained a motion that we approve?
So moved.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Beer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. In the agenda packet was the Treasurer's Report for August 2022 for your information. The next item is the August 2022 Revenue Report. Ms. Roberta is out today, and so if you maybe scroll down to the graphics for me, please, I'll do a poor job of trying to substitute for her. So on our gross receipt taxes, you can see that for August, the gross receipts were slightly higher than the July receipts, just about $4.5 million. Then scroll on down, please. I think the oil and gas revenues come behind that. Yeah, so you can see there $4.4 million compared to 3.9 for July, indication of activity levels in the county. So scroll down to the oil and gas, please. Again, similar increase. This is a reflection of prices from, so there's a three-month lag of production and the price for the month. So see, just over $10 million for August receipts for oil and gas. So those would have been the $100 per barrel range for that. You scroll on down, giving the actual figure.
What did, what was WTI today?
This morning it was 85. Last week it was trading about 74. So over the weekend, there's been a slight shift and the prices have rebounded slightly. So.
Can we go back down to that or up?
To the graphic?
To the graphic, please. So why the peak right there in December? What's the?
So that's when we receive the taxes for equipment. They generally come in December.
Okay.
So it's not price-related. It's, that's when the, I might not use the right term. Oil and gas production equipment taxes are received, not rendered or received.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
And that happens each year, so. All right. Scrolling down, there you go. So the production volume has increased slightly, but the big change is relative to price. So, all right. And I think that's probably it. All right. So if there are any questions, other questions, I'll try and answer them for the Revenue Report for August 2022.
Having no questions, we entertain a motion that we approve the August 2022 Revenue Report.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Beer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next up is the Budget versus Actual August Revenue and Expense Report. So if you want to scroll down to the, there you go. So we had budget revenue of $142 million. Actual revenue is, received is $70.8 million. So through August, we've received 50% of our budget revenues. We have transfers of $30 million that have moved funds into appropriate categories for work. On the budget side, we had $158 million budgeted. Actual expense through August was $45.6 million or just under 29% expenditure. So we're off to a good start. The work that we have planned, this is part of the road season. We've got several other projects going on with courthouse remodel and things like that. So the departments are busy at what they do, and we appreciate it.
So, so these numbers are through August, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're talking June 30th was our year end, so July and August.
July and August.
Two months, we're 50% into our budget or collecting 50% of our annual budget.
Right, and we forecast for revenue. Our GRT forecast was conservative relative to receipts. And our oil and gas revenue forecast is conservative. We forecast 14 million barrels a month, 13 million barrels a month, and $60 WTI and 60 billion cubic feet per month at $2, $2 per MMBTU. Receipts, as was shown there for August, I think the price, the average price for those production volumes was probably in the $100 range. Since that peak, I would expect the next month's revenue to not be quite as high on oil and gas because the average price was down in the 90-95 range. So I think prices are going to moderate a little bit. I think the average for September will wind up being in the low 80s dollars per barrel. Gas prices, natural gas prices have been relatively firm in the $7 to $8 range. There were some peaks at $9 that we experienced a couple of months ago, but recently they've been trading in the upper sevens, low eights per MMBTU. So, and gas volumes, gas volumes continue to climb. Between Eddy and Lee County, we produce about 5 billion cubic feet a day. And between the two counties, we produce 1.5 million barrels of crude oil per day. So Eddy County is about 600, 650,000 barrels a day of crude oil and about 3.5 billion cubic feet a day. Lee County is about 850,000 barrels of crude oil a day and about 2.2 billion cubic feet a day.
So we keep on schedule, and the first five months will cover our budget?
That would be a fair assumption, Commissioner, yes.
We are weighted at the beginning, though, because of the extreme high prices for the first two months.
Right.
But, yeah, but we, but it's like 300%.
Right, well over our forecast.
I'm giving you an extra month.
That was my figure as well. Just with this drop in the price, it's not going to be the end of October when we.
So we'll continue to watch, but, and manage the revenues appropriately for work that we can get accomplished. Over the past, over the past two and a half years, the county has probably expended more than $50 million on road improvements in the county. Lots of roads improve, and there's still roads to be improved, right?
Oh, yeah.
We have, we have, work continues, opportunity continues to abound in that space. But we have systematic program and approach to accomplish it, and we've been executing in that fashion, so.
Yeah, one of the good things about it, that in that meeting, one of the top priorities is going to be to push a bill to, for the state to help fund judicial complexes.
Really?
We'll keep our fingers crossed and.
Yeah.
Light a candle and say a couple of prayers, see how that movie turns out. We can have some more comments in the Legislative Update about some things that I, you know, what NMC was doing and what some of the other legislators are looking at as the next session approaches. But from a expenditure standpoint, a revenue standpoint, Eddy County is in good shape. We continue to be conservative in our forecasts and the things that we approve for expenditures, trying to take care of business here in Eddy County. There are other questions related to the Budget and Revenue Expense Report for August?
Like to add to that, it may very well be too much to get it done. That price has got nowhere to go but up. The Saudis have cut back a million barrels in their monthly production. The feds are no longer releasing National Reserve a billion barrels a day. And then there's that explosion over there in the Baltic Sea. I mean, there's nowhere for this stuff to go but up.
The good part is the feds had an emergency meeting yesterday, or Friday, no, yesterday, and the rumor is that maybe they're going to cut the rate, so that'll help.
The political whims and whims of federal monetary policy and federal energy policy continue to evade the majority of us. Stay tuned. All right. So any other comments or questions about Budget versus Actual August Revenue and Expense Report?
Having none, we entertain a motion that we approve Budget versus Actual August Revenue.
So moved.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Beer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate the discussion and comments. Next item of business is the Eddy County Compensation Plan Revision. Ms. Roxanne.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, how are you this morning?
Good, how are you?
I'm here. We need to adjust our compensation plan. We did some changes approving the sheriff and the detention. But in our, I'll just go down to the things and elaborate. In Chapter 1, we took out the reference to the midpoint, if you guys want.
So what Roxanne's referring to, we're updating the policy that we use to administer the pay plan. So the, we're not adjusting the pay plan.
No.
We're updating the policy of how we administer the plan.
And so in Chapter 3, the market survey, this is related to the positions being tied together, and that was, it had referenced the sheriff and the detention center, maybe bond driven. That has been removed from the Eddy County Compensation Plan. They are no longer tied together. It's the Sheriff Department, it's the Detention Department, and some of the other things that were listed that were tied together are no longer tied together. It's each department standalone. The other thing that we did is we took out the red circling chapter. That was put in there a long time ago, but everybody's pretty much where they should be, and there's no need for the red circling hold somebody's pay, you know, because they're above market. And the other things were just minor. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Have you reviewed the changes?
I have. You know, this thing's been in effect for so many years.
Yes.
I mean, and I guess it's worked. There may be, need to be some tweaks and things coming up in the future that Mr. Davis and Roxanne are looking at, but for now, it's a pretty good stopgap measure.
And we needed to update it so that when the auditors come through and say, okay, are you administering your process according to your documents? We can say, yes, here you go. So it's really just, I don't want to talk clean, but yeah, it was to bring it up to date with what we've done recently.
And our policies in compliance with the new sick leave policies mandated by the legislature and those things?
We're consistent with the state regulations.
We've always paid sick leave. We haven't never not paid sick leave.
I just knew that there was, starting, what was it, January, there was a new.
Yeah.
Yeah. For those companies that didn't provide sick leave, and we have provided.
And the county's been very generous in that regard for quite some time, so try and take care of our folks.
Entertained a motion that we approve the Eddy County Compensation Plan Revision.
I'll make the motion.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Beer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thanks, Roxanne.
Thank you.
Next item is pay a previous fiscal year invoice from Kat Wagner for the Sandpoint landfill, Mr. Burns.
This is one that slipped through the fingers of Kat. We really tried to keep all our invoices paid, and they came back to us here in the last couple of weeks today. We've gone back and realized this wasn't paid with check with finance, and it indeed in fact was not paid. It was for services that were performed on a piece of equipment that we were leasing at the time, that since we have decided to discontinue. So we request your approval to go ahead and pay this and be done with it. It'll come out of our existing budget, won't need any additional funds. So we just need approval to go ahead and pay them for what was already done.
Any questions?
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Beer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Next item of business is reclassify Assistant IT Director to Senior Assistant IT Director, Ms. Carol.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Senior Assistant Director position's opened up with the new budget, so I found out what the qualifications were, and it's basically, they do a job beyond the Assistant Director position. My Assistant IT Director is Jason Flores, and by the way, he's the real Jason. We decided that.
The real?
He's not the real one. We decided that at the last conference, minus the real Jason. So anyway, he, before he took this position, or he was awarded this position, he was our network engineer, and he had to take those duties with him because he does all the network. And basically, what you do as a network engineer, and what he does, it's above and beyond the IT Assistant Director, is basically every piece of computer equipment that connects to our network, whether it's tied in or whether it's remotely through the internet, through a secure connection, he configures. He decides, like, everything is sectioned off in, like, beanlands so that the computers are protected, like, by departments, so that they can get to their resources and nobody else can get to them. So that's a, you wouldn't believe how detailed that is, and when you add something, you've got to make sure it doesn't complicate something else. So he has a high degree of training for this, and it's an additional duty that we've tasked him with. And so I'm asking you to allow him to become Senior Assistant IT Director for those reasons.
So this is consistent with what we've done. We made a similar change in the HR Department and the Finance Department. And in each instance, what I asked for was help me understand or differentiate from what they're, what they were doing, what we've asked them to do now, to be in this senior position. And in essence, being able to step in as the Director for that department should something arise or something happens. And so Ms. Carol and I had a good discussion, and we looked at the context of Jason's responsibilities, what was in the current job description, and what his current responsibilities, what we've asked him to do, and we adjusted the job description for this senior role to align with those additional responsibilities.
Questions or comments? Having none, entertain a motion that we approve the reclassification of IT, of Assistant IT Director to Senior Assistant IT Director.
Someone?
Second.
Motion in a second. I thought I was going to die right there. That was, that was a close one here. Yeah. For like a second.
Saved by the man.
Requesting, okay, entertaining, where are they?
Well, let's vote.
Let's vote.
Beer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Ms. Carol. Item number eight is a budget adjustment request of $1 million and zero cents.
One million.
From Mr. Hooper.
You look different today.
I feel a bit different.
Is it an improvement?
I feel like this is a great improvement here. Commissioners, we're asking for a million-dollar budget adjustment on this. We've got all of our grant funding to date encumbered through Phase 2 of the Southeast Loop Project and wanting to try to get this budget adjustment in there to cover any of the unforeseen change orders that might come about, the smaller items that we don't presently have the money for due to the encumbrance of every single cent that we've gotten out of the grants to this point.
So this is a proactive effort to, if we run into rock issues or other utility issues that hadn't previously been identified along that, because this is a big, this is basically the majority of US refinery Road that is in this phase of work. So it's a proactive effort to try and provide that contingency if needed so that it's in place and earmarked for use.
What percentage is that of the whole, of this phase? I'm just talking about this phase.
We've completed Phase 1 with the exception of.
No, I'm talking about the phase.
So is this, this $10 million, Jason? So this, do you know if this, these phases, is that $10 million for these two phases?
The $10 million for the current phase, they have one construction run out of Phase 2. That's the midday of going on, and they'll be at Phases 3, 4, I think.
Okay, so we're $10 million on Phase 2?
Yes.
Okay. You think a million dollars is enough on a contingency basis?
I think so on a contingency basis. We have all the planning and design covered out there. I think we're good to go.
And we can always adjust if we need to. Correct.
I think it should be plenty. We've got, we've done some pretty diligent research to make sure that we have everything planned and designed well on the second phase.
I just didn't want us to have to come back.
We've, we did have to pull back the second phase a little bit due to a lack of expected grant funding. We had to shorten the second phase up slightly, but we're there. We've got the stuff planned, we're ready to move forward. We're just, we've actually started Phase 2 already.
10.2 million is the bid cost.
About 10%.
Bid cost, yeah.
Well, you know the cost of engineering on that project?
I don't off the top of my head.
Can you, can you get with Wes and pull that, just send it to me and I'll?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm always interested on the engineering. I'm like Steve. What, you know, we should be looking at somewhere between 6% to less than 10%.
Well, and you know, if we save a bunch on the engineering, we're going to have a few of these things like this, but if we go out and spend, you know, 10% on engineering or something like that, engineers may need to make sure that we don't encumber a bunch of change orders or something like that.
Right, exactly.
But if we just kind of fast-tracked them and said, hey, let's go out there and do it, then I'm okay with a contingency, but you know, we just don't want to get into.
Right.
No, I.
It's been a while, obviously. Yeah, it's been a while, so, and I'll be right.
Yeah.
You know, but rock excavation, things like that, I mean, but you know, there are certain things that obviously we know how to write change orders that are correct change orders and something like that. We want to get into the correct change orders, not the incorrect.
Well, we want to make sure we've got our business plan and we execute it, and then that our contracted engineering firm helps us hold to that.
Yeah, and they're holding up their end of the bargain in that they've done their duty, and if they've missed something, Eddy County should be the one that, if it encovers those, those costs.
So if you'd get with Wes and.
You just want Phase 2?
Yeah, send us Phase 2, and if you've got an estimate on Phase 3, that'd be fine as well.
Okay.
So, just information that we can share with them, so.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
Make the motion, we attack.
Okay, we've got a motion up here.
And a second for the budget adjustment of $1 million.
No cents.
Please call for the vote again.
Beer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. McCroskey. Approval and ratification of agreements previously executed by County Commission Chair, Mr. McCutcheon, for purchase of lands from landowners is indicated in each of the attached agreements required for the expansion and adjusting of County Road 605, New Mexico. The agreements were A22-191, A22-192, and A22-193, and A22-194. These were purchases that we made for the right-of-way to expand the right-of-way along that corridor from the landowners along that corridor. So we met with Commissioner McCutcheon, and so we're asking to ratify those agreements through the Commission so that we're also asking for the authority for Mr. Tabor or myself to execute the closing agreements associated with this purchase and acquisition. These were all nominal amounts for land purchase. They're small parcels, and to make sure that we, we got some feedback from finance that it would be better if the Commission ratified the Chairman's signature on those agreements for audit purposes.
Now, in this one, we have authorization for Stephen to do it. Now, in this one, we have authorization for Stephen to do it, for the commission chair. To some, they're closing documents and they're ready to sign, I believe, aren't they, Adrian? Yeah, they're ready to sign, take over the title company and it'll be done.
So we're trying to make sure we got all the paperwork in order with all of the contingencies behind them so that we can continue with our clean audit performance.
That's fair, fair description.
Any discussion or questions?
Entertaining motion that we approve the ratification of agreements previously executed by County Commission Chair Stephen McCutcheon for purchase of lands, the landowners indicated in each, the attached agreements required for the expansion adjustment of CR six oh five eighty, County Mexico A twenty-two one ninety-one, A twenty-two one ninety-two, A twenty-two one ninety-three, and A twenty-two one eighty.
Slow move.
Second.
Motion is second, please call for the vote.
Beard.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Fair bit of housekeeping on things, this, this agenda, so thank you very much. Uh, next item of business is the resolution and agreement consent agenda.
Any questions or items to pull, comments there? Having an entertaining, a motion that we approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda as presented.
Motion is second, please call for the vote.
Beard.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yeah.
Cordova.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, next item is the elected official and the department updates. Are there any updates? Mr. Burns.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just real quick, um, I know we received several, uh, concerns about Happy Valley Park. I just want to give you kind of a quick update as to where we're at on that. We have had two public meetings, I think we have a pretty good, uh, conceptual design of what we're gonna do. Kind of the plan moving forward with that is we're gonna, we're, we're gonna see how much of it we can do in-house with our local guys and then the issue we're having right now is how we're gonna water it. We don't have a good water source on how we're gonna, um, water new grass, new dirt. From our understanding, the, the local water, uh, which is the Blue Jay or the...
Bluebird.
Bluebird, thank you, sir. They're, they're using about the extent of their water rights for potable water, which leaves us not enough to properly water that park. So we're trying to talk to the city, um, we're considering using irrigation water, which has several concerns, but we've got to figure that piece out before we go come in and say, hey, we're gonna build this big, beautiful park, um, because we don't want to build something that we can't maintain. So we're figuring out that piece of it. In the meantime, we have got a local contractor that's gonna go over there and mow it, clean it up so it's presentable, and code enforcement doesn't come write us a ticket for it in the meantime. But we are moving forward on that, we are addressing it and we're gonna start trying to move on it, so.
So I think you, you had previously shared with the commission some of the conceptual designs that the public, you had presented for public consideration. So you've seen some of those, some of it's zirescapes, some of it's more equipment and, you know, for, for the park. I mean, it was a, conceptually, there were some good ideas there. Uh, I don't know if you've come to the point of finalizing that potential design or if you have another meeting to do so.
We did present a, uh, the three options to the public, well, I think we got it narrowed down, I'll share that with the commission, I'll send that out. It included some new playground equipment, it included a large shade area for, uh, for group gatherings. And then we really went out and tried to maximize the turf area for football, baseball, soccer practices, um, that I know we always need, we need area for. And it was designed in a way that it would minimize maintenance. A little more concrete, squared off edges, and then it could just be mowed and it wasn't near as many hangups as you get with weed eating, so. Like I said, we, we want to get something that we can maintain and if we can't water, we need to figure out what we're gonna do. But we've, we're pursuing several options.
What's, what's the real issue with water, because surely you'd be able to buy a meter or two or something like that? Can you give us the, I mean, are, are, are they using their maximum acre feet everywhere? There's nothing to purchase or anything like that?
The Happy Valley Water Co-op, from what I understand, it Bluebird's irrigation and they have the Happy Valley Water Co-op, that's the potable water source, isn't that correct?
Yes.
We are tied in right now with the Happy Valley Water Co-op, it's potable water, um...
The park is?
Yes.
We are.
Yes. They're using all their available acre feet to provide potable water to the citizens of Happy Valley. And they're kind of, when we have dry years, they're going right up to the edge of it, um, using all their available acre feet and water right.
And they're bound by some grant funding and things like that, they used to put that system in.
Communication's been minimal with Happy Valley, we've been working on it. So there's a, we're trying to get in and figure it out. We did have some water rights at one time.
Who's the president of the board down there?
It's, uh, Heath, uh...
Willingham?
Yeah.
Okay.
Heath's the president, I'm one of them, and then I think it's, uh... Hackberry.
Is, is it Jones?
Denise Matters is...
No, it's Hackberry, it's, um, it's a gentleman's name.
You're talking about the potable water for Happy Valley?
Jones, he lives out on Jones with the farm.
The only one I know is Denise who's gone over to the potable water park.
She, she was, we've talked with her, but she did go find out that we sold those water rights. So we did some trading back in, long ago, and she did find that documentation that we don't have the water rights in the, uh, on the park anymore. So we're, we're tied into potable water. And they've said that the, the citizens come first before the park, which is extensive.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we're, we're exploring several options right now, what'll be sustainable for that deal, so.
So have you not heard from Heath Willingham at all?
No, we're, he's, no.
He's just simply not returning your calls?
So, well...
That's the holdup, folks.
Well, we'll keep working on them. I don't know if they have it to provide it, and I don't think we take it away from the citizens of Happy Valley, we need to look at an alternate.
It's two different systems, one's irrigation and one's potable water.
Right.
And I'm, by understanding, is the water is there.
For the irrigation, there's some other hangups when using irrigation as far as when it's available, it's not available year-round. Who are we gonna get to go out and properly irrigate it, you know? We've actually really been, who, who's been the most helpful on this is Woods. Woods has really come in and helped us with the irrigation side and done some soil analysis and really been helpful trying to find us something that'll work. So he's come to the public meetings and reached out a few times, so Woods is, Woods has been very helpful. So, we'll, we'll keep working on it, keep you, um, informed. I will send out the conceptual designs, what we're planning to do. And we are gonna go over there and, like I said, get it cleaned up and probably start doing some demo, uh, just on our existing contracts and get it to where we can start moving some things around and moving towards the end goal. So we'll piecemeal and we'll get something that we can actually really be proud of.
Wh- once you finalize the design, you might put together a, an information board or a sign that you could put on the park so that when folks come by, they can see, here's the plan, here's the timeline, here's what we, our budget estimate is to accomplish this and here's what you can expect.
That's, that's a good idea, sir.
So, so we need to let the record show that Eddie County is doing their best to put a park in there. You can't get a hold of the president of the board, he goes Heath Willingham. If he helps, Willingham wants to get a citizen in the park, we just need to open a dialogue and see if we can be creative and figure out how to water the dang park, essentially?
Yes, sir.
Okay. They have a Facebook or record or whatever.
I'm not gonna say it before, because I've got plenty to say, but I need to refer some facts.
So, um, now, there's one more, I forgot what it was.
Did you get your trucks?
They're on the way, we found out.
Awesome, awesome.
We've almost received all of our FEMA equipment, um, the trucks are on the way. We found out we still have the order for them and we should close that out here this month and hopefully be able to get that all pushed through up at the state. We've still been in contact with them with the FEMA, um, and then we will finally be done, yeah.
The, the last step in that is to try and get the state to help us get signed off that the changes at the state level continue to, and they've had other FEMA activities since then. So getting this on their current list of, uh, for attention has been a little bit of a challenge.
They're, they, they still have it on their middle burner, it's not pushed to the back yet, but we are still in contact with them. We're gonna get this closed out, it's, it's gonna be, we're just gonna get it right, finalized, signed, sealed, and done. So, um, we are working on that. We have almost received all our equipment, um, and the trucks, so we're...
They were the last, they were the last bid.
Right. The other thing I was gonna mention, I remember what it was, is we had a very productive meeting with some local railroad BNSF officials. We, we sat down and it was a gentleman, uh, who was their main track inspector and representing the rail yard master of this area. And we had a very productive conversation in that we're gonna mutually be, help each other, help me, help you. We've already gone out and done some patching on some railroads, crossings on county roads with their, uh, supervision. And we've got a plan right now, uh, that we're inspecting a bunch of other crossings, about ten or twelve, that have some significant, uh, holes, that we're gonna go out and get a plan on how we're gonna fix those, either remove and pave up to them, which they'd like to see done. I said, well, it's, you know, it's how we do cattle guards, it should be done. And we're gonna really work in conjunction with them to, uh, get those fixed and kind of make a relationship that we can work on and, and improve a bunch of these crossings that we have. So hopefully we can foster that relationship and, and keep it going, so.
We also had some discussions about options up near Lakewood, right?
We did, we, um, we discussed that. He was unaware of any culvert crossings. I did go out and meet with the local landowner yesterday, I went Mount Ross, and we walked the track. So that's actually gonna be one of our current investigations that we have with some of our new equipment, is to go and look at the, uh, contours and the, do a mapping of that and see where the, where it's actually flowing and see if we can either identify where those culverts are, where they need to go, or what kind of drainage system we could put in to get it down to the river.
We, we have that packet from Ross that they've done and they found a couple of those, but they had to dig them out with the back of them.
He went and looked for that yesterday and couldn't find it, so if you've got that, I need that.
I've got it, or Wes has it in his office, so we'll maybe get it back from us.
Some work, because we...
But we have the, we have pictures of concrete culverts that were dug out.
Ron and I talked about that, um, how he needs some, and, and he does, that's flowed over and made some pretty big, uh, erosion cuts and he's needing some help putting that back. I told him we could help him with that, if we could go in there and, uh, find those culverts and help dig them out and he's... So he, like I said, mutually beneficially help each other, help me, help you. And I think we'll be able to foster that and get that going, so.
That's a big deal.
This is great news, I'm very happy to hear it.
And then the reports on the held-up school buses, we, the lady we met with and the plan or... What, I understood the, the folks that moved the cars in the yard, what their, have been told the expectations are for clearing the crossings. We may need to visit a little bit with school district and the school bus companies so that if they encounter a situation, they have the numbers that they could call to get that addressed immediately.
And I did read in that email that they said ten minutes was the timeframe, that, you know, traffic should be stopped there. So I just really appreciate the county meeting with them and fostering this relationship.
Yeah. Okay, make your question.
Thank you.
Other departments, updates, or elected officials? Mr. Jennifer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted to let you guys know that the mitigation plan, the all-hazard mitigation plan is now out on the website for the county. It will be out for public, uh, comment for thirty days. Um, and thanks to Carol for putting that out there and then, um, so to the public, it's a hundred and fifty-three pages currently. And, uh, if the public has any comments, they, uh, just click on that link that she put out there and it goes directly to our department so that they can comment on it.
So then we'll, we'll have one final public hearing and then we'll bring it to commission.
Uh, it'll get sent to the state, hopefully get their blessing.
Their blessing, and then it'll come to commission.
Yes.
So we're in the process of getting that updated, finalized, and then what's...
Wrong, overdue, yes.
Okay, so, cool.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Mack?
Order, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So, one, Jared just had a meeting last week with the State Fire Marshal's Office. They are pushing out the twenty-twenty-one fire code effective November first, so we're working to get all of our stuff done to bring it to y'all by the next meeting so we can go into effect the same day they do. They're gonna give a six-month grace period, is what they're saying right now, to adjust. We also finally have the MOU on the fire inspection so that we have the full authority in the county and the world. So I have the one for the Village of Loving. So our office will be able to do all the plan reviews and all the inspections. Just some quick statistics that we've been trying to gather for y'all. So far, year-to-date, we've run two thousand one hundred and ninety-two calls. And in the last three months, we've had seven hundred and twelve calls and then thirty-five so far this month. Currently, with the offers that are out, we have sixteen of the twenty-one positions filled. And then we'll be testing again on the fourteenth and the twenty-first. And then yesterday, we had a structure fire. Our engine was the first one on scene out of Loving and we were able to confine the fire to the room and contents that initially started in, so. Saw a positive outcome of it. And then we were also to...
Where was the structure fire, ballpark?
Do what?
Where was the structure fire?
Uh, out towards Derrick and two eighty-five, in that vicinity, so. Closer up to the Otis station, but the Loving station was obviously staffed, so they responded up into the county.
Great.
What would have happened, had the Loving station up in there?
Probably what's happened in the past, which is, just cool down what's left on and get that. So, because usually it takes a volunteer ten to fifteen minutes and depending on where they're coming from, um, you know, it extends it, so honestly, the two volunteers that responded, one went to the Otis station, the other one would've went to the Happy Valley station, so. Would've had quite an extended time, so.
Good deal. So it went from twenty to thirty minutes...
Yeah.
On scene to five to ten?
Yeah, so within about ten minutes, we had our engine, the Carlsbad engine, out from Station Six by the airport and the ladder truck from Wood Street all on scene. So we had eleven people plus the battalion chief all there, so we had a good response. They were also, we were able to identify a home that was in need of, uh, they had a failing smoke detector yesterday, so we're gonna go out today and do a home safety evaluation and do some smoke detector installs for them, so. Pretty successful day yesterday, even though it was crazy busy. I know the sheriff's office was running just as much as we were. It was, it was wild yesterday for some reason, so. If y'all need anything, give us a call, we appreciate y'all.
Thanks, Jared. So Commissioner Carlson, you can fire your barbecue back up.
That's right. I know we're gonna be there quick enough to put that out before it gets used.
Hey, I want to tell you, they were there about four and a half minutes on my fire and it still did a world of damage. You know, it's amazing how fast one, I didn't really fully understand how fast one of those fires could grow in just a short amount of time.
That's fact.
But, but having said that, last week, I moved back into my house.
All right.
Yeah. So, I appreciate everything they did, because I would've, uh, it wouldn't take long for me to be in a world of hurt. I would've pitched a tent out in the yard.
So your son-in-law is happy for you too?
Yeah.
Their drive is now available?
Yes, yeah.
All right, any other updates? All right, legislative update. Commissioner Carlson, before the meeting, was talking about he'd filled in for the sheriff at the NMC, um, uh, annual meeting there preparation for, um, business for the upcoming legislative session in January.
We did, and, uh, you know, what I was surprised about, a lot of their initiatives, uh, kind of are in line with our county's initiative, you know, fire services, uh, law enforcement, uh, roads, top priority roads, and then, uh, infrastructure. And so, uh, that, that's going to kind of lead... And so, uh, that, that's going to kind of lead, uh, their initiatives. And one of the big bills that I was happy to see was they're, uh, gonna push a, a bill for replacement. A, a bill that, uh, would help fund replacements of judicial complexes. Like the courthouses and stuff, courthouse initiative, I think that's what they called it. And, um, so it would be a fifty-fifty deal where the state would help fund fifty percent and it'd be matching funds from the county. And so I thought that was, something like that would be a tremendous help for rural areas. And it got support throughout the state. One of the things that I thought was, uh, was interesting is that, uh, they're totally becoming aware of how important, uh, oil and gas is to the state. And so they were talking about, uh, how important it is for the state of New Mexico to support the oil and gas industry, you know, that, I just thought that was funny coming from some of the, the northern counties even. So maybe we're making some headway.
I think to that end, Commissioner, um, in the last ten days, I've had the opportunity to go to a couple of oil and gas trade associations, the Permian Basin Producers Association in Midland, and then the New Mexico Oil and Gas Association there. Meeting was there yesterday and it continues today. But at both of those meetings, there were lots of legislators there. Um, in the, in the Permian Basin Associations meeting, both Texas and New Mexico legislators. In fact, one of the panels was for the New Mexico legislators during the meeting and they talked. They had a Texas panel and they spoke about their session and some of the challenges they've had and things. But the, the flavor from the New Mexico delegation was a little bit different. It was about the urgency to be involved and the urgency to help affect change. Um, I think them sharing what occurs in the New Mexico legislature compared to what's occurs in the Texas legislature was a bit of a stark difference. And, and there were a lot of folks in the audience that were surprised or, um, unhappy about some of the challenges that go on. Um, state of Texas, generally speaking, is very supportive of oil and gas industry. And has been for years and years and years, right? Um, not only from the upstream end, the, the drilling and production end, but the, the refining and marketing end. There's some huge industries along the coast in Texas that, you know, provide lots of jobs and, and revenue and things like that. Um, to hear the challenges that New Mexico faces, um, the, the, the rep, we had Representative Townsend, Representative Dowd, uh, Senator Nyberg and Representative Scott were all, all there. And to hear them talk about the, everybody recognizes the revenue generated from the production severance tax and grocery seed taxes. But to hear that led, the, the, the New Mexico legislature, they don't care where it's, uh, let's just spend what we got and spend, spend more than we got. And that was a very different tune from what the, the Texas side, and Texas accomplishes a lot. They, they, they're, they apply their money similarly. Um, but one of the messages that the legislators were talking about was having people go vote. Don't be apathetic. Express your opinions through your, your right to vote. And, and have confidence in your vote and go get it done. Um, they were very optimistic about some of the, um, New Mexico races and what their polls are indicating. Polls, polls are tough, right? Everybody's looking for some little bit of, uh, prognostication. But the key event is, there, there, there'll be many races decided by a small number of votes. So the way to affect that is to get more people to go vote. And so that, that was one of the messages that they had. So they're preparing for the legislative session. Some of the things that they see occurring um, are similar to past years. There were some comments, um, Senator Engel was the breakfast speaker at one of those meetings. And, uh, a question was asked of him about will some of the the bills that have been presented in previous years that attempt to hinder and reduce the, the oil and gas activities, will they continue to show up in his, his comment? You know, and from, from his lips to God's ears, um, they won't. They'll struggle to get out of committee and if they do, they, they may not get votes on the, on the floor. Um, never say never. I thought that was a, kind of a bold statement. But hopefully to, to Commissioner Carlson's point, the recognition of the revenues that are coming in. You know, David Abbey, the, the director for the Legislative Finance Committee Operations, you know, they're predicting almost two billion dollars of quote-unquote new money. I'm, I'm not sure. I understand completely the term of new money, but it's monies that were above and beyond the budgeted amounts that were, that were budgeted for revenue expenditures. And so last year's budget was seven billion dollars and they got two billion dollars of new money. There's a lot of concern about cage bar of the door. We can, we can be frivolous away, but there are a lot of needs in New Mexico that with some intense, intense focus and perspective should be able to be accomplished. We hope that prevails, but we'll watch and see that. So from the legislative update, that's, that's what I've gathered over the last couple of weeks. Are there any other comments related to legislative updates? Travel cons, request consent agenda.
Any items discussed or pulled? Guess we can't not let Jason go to Montana.
I talked feverishly and diligently about this. And I've got it down to just a one-day turnaround. So the trip up and back should just wear the stuffing out of it. But it is for a piece of equipment and some training.
Oh, he's already been.
He's already been.
Yeah. I, like I say, I tried to-
It was vetted.
It was vetted. Montana's still, they're okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any items discussed or pulled? Well, having, uh, entertain a motion, we approve the travel request consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion aside, please call the vote.
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes. We have no emergency business. Um, the legislators are busy and actively engaged. Um, how many days to the election? About thirty?
The eighth of November.
So, not many. All right. County manager comments. Uh, I've shared a little bit about those, those two trade organizations. But in both of them, there were some keynote speakers that I thought had a lot of good data to share about what's occurring today in our economy and what to look for. Um, yesterday, Michael Schellen, Schellenberger, I think is how you say his name. Um, he's the author of a book called Apocalypse Never. And he's, he's from California. Um, he's, last twenty-five years has collected from an environmental standpoint, just tremendous amounts of data on all sorts of things related to climate change and, and different things. And, uh, his comments are, he's documented them in this book, but basically the, the summation of his message was the, a small vocal minority of the media is generating basically a, a false dialogue about what's occurring that's not supported by the actual physical data. And he's, he's not the, he's not the author of the data. He's pulled the data from public and national, uh, reports and, and, and institutes and just compiled the data. Um, and so the, what it comes down to is it's rhetoric for a different agenda. But that agenda has wreaked havoc on where we stand today in our economy, not just nationally, but globally. Um, there are some things that we should do and are doing. Um, but the consequence of this agenda and this, this, I hate to call it a, 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 a media agenda, because the media's picked up on it. It's funded by, by the actual folks behind the agenda. But some of that data is pretty striking and very startling. That is indirect. Um, it, it debunks a lot of the, the claims about what's going on. And so from those two, my takeaway from those two events is the energy that we use today will continue to support our national economy and global economy. To say that we're gonna get rid of it is, is physically impossible. Not just not feasible, it's physically impossible. But in doing so, you also deny ninety percent of the world population the quality of life that most western society has taken for granted. And now you're gonna be the, the bigger and say, oh, no, we're not, sorry, you can't have that. We're not gonna do this, you can't have that. The greatest benefit to humanity over that period of time has been the advancement of improved use and efficiency of energy, has improved the quality of life wherever it occurs. And there's a huge portion of the world population that has yet to experience that. But it can be done in a way that, that doesn't have the negative harm and impact that's being touted. The United States has already accomplished a greater reduction in emissions, whichever one you wanna pick. CO2, pick any of them, greater than anywhere else in the world, changing from coal to natural gas. Natural gas is the, is, will be the current vehicle until decisions are made about nuclear energy and, and subsequent hydrogen energy. But there's a lot of time that has to, and technological advances to get us to those energy efficient endpoints. Let's take what we got and make the most of it and do the things that we're capable of doing. So, um, I think there are better things on the horizon. Hopefully we can broaden the, the awareness and acceptance of that information and help people make better informed decisions. But, uh, no doubt we're in some tough times, but I think better times are ahead, so. I'll, I'll leave it at that. Um, questions or comments? If not, we'll move to county man, or county commissioner comments.
Um, I had mentioned this to Al a couple of weeks ago, but just, I'm just so thankful that you're our representative, Al, and that you're the one that brings us back this information and breaks it down for us in such a way. You know, your background in oil and natural gas is just so well-versed for our county and I'm just very thankful, you know, that you're here to kind of interpret all this information for us. Um, and, you know, as well as the commission. I, we've said before, we feel balanced. We feel like we each have our role on here and it's just nice to be able to bring all of this, um, information and experience together so that we can share this message and encourage people to make informed decisions. I wanna thank Jason, Wes, and, um, everybody else talking to BNSF. That's very important to me. And, um, so I'm grateful that we're fostering a good relationship there. And as always, I'm just very appreciative of everybody in the county for the work that they're doing. And, um, I just, I'm just very proud to be in any county and represent, you know, a district in any county, so thank you everybody.
Sure. Um, just a couple of things real quick. Uh, we did a career fair in Artesia last week. It was good to see the sheriff's department. Everybody was there. There was multiple different, amount of different departments there. I know Josh had some cool trucks set up, all that good stuff. Uh, but anyways, at one point I went over and, and with our HR group and they were asking random questions to kids so they could win them up and all this stuff. I gotta admit, was a bit shocking and terrifying sometimes. I mean, some of their questions were, what's the capital of, or what's the state capital? El Paso was some answers, uh, which is a whole nother state. So I was a little worried at times, um, on, on some of the answers, so. But I think we had a good time. The, the ladies did a great job of asking those questions, having a good time with the kids. I will let you know, they don't know a single one of us. They never got that answer right. So if that hurts y'all's feelings, I'm sorry. But, but we're not on their radar. But, uh, I thought it was a good career fair. I think they did a good job. I appreciate all the departments who showed up at the time. Um, obviously good positive notes for Artesia. Our football team looks pretty good. Uh, we've ended two games so far at halftime. Um, they're, they're pretty good this year, so, so it's exciting to come watch. So if y'all wanna come down and watch an Artesia game, uh, let us know. We'll make sure y'all get some good seats. And I truly, I'm not saying this, I don't know how your team's doing, a call's bad. I haven't paid that much attention, so that's my fault. Hopefully y'all are doing well. Um, and then I'm, I'm glad you kinda mentioned the climate change. One of the things, during, during Friday night's game, my wife and I are nerds and had our phones up to our ears, so the time differences were perfect. We could listen to the Texas governor debate or litorial debate. And then, uh, right after that was ours. And, uh, so we got to listen to both debates. And, and it is shocking to hear the difference in tone and how things go. Um, you know, Texas at one time wasn't that great at education. Now their education is, is pretty, pretty well top notch in the nation. Whereas New Mexico continues to spin near the top and we get bottom results. And, and a lot of the answers that, that I heard from New Mexico was, well, we need to spend more. Well, it doesn't seem to be working and yet that's still the tone. And I think that's government's answer so many times is let's just spend more and we'll get the results instead of fix the problem. Uh, and I'm really worried New Mexico's on the path of continuing, let's just spend, spend, spend. Uh, when they got into the permanent fund, should we break into the permanent fund? Which is the absolute worst idea I've ever heard in my life, cause we're, we have a ridiculous amount of money going to the state right now and their solution is break into the permanent fund for lower education, which they've still continued to fail. So, you know, it is, it is very scary to listen to the two, they are two di, very different paths. Now granted, Texas does have somebody running that is a scary path, I think, for Texas. But Texas is a very well-balanced state. I mean, they, their representative house and, and their, their state house is insistent very well. Whereas here, we're, we're, we're a little bit less balanced as much. Um, but, but you're right. And then on the climate, I get really frustrated because, you know, we hear it so often, whereas I realize we don't have forests, but, but the forest is near and dear to me since I was born and raised in one. When they continue to blame climate change and oil and gas for the fires we're seeing in forests, that's an absolute incorrect statement. I mean, you look at the fuel loads that are on the forest grounds because of policies they put in place. And rather than own those policies, what they've done is diverted to now climate change. And that, that's just bad information and hopefully our, our youth will start seeing that. Um, I think the only way to get the millennials off this climate change thing is if, if they for some reason can't charge their iPhone for a week, climate change will end that day. Um, and that's a true statement. I mean, we are so used to the comfort, but once our comfort is gone, all of a sudden that's not a fun idea anymore. Um, and, and, and so we're gonna have to get some, some actual common sense back in some things, look at these, look at these things correct. Um, take good data and not skewed data for both sides, um, and, and make some good decisions. Of course, we want our climate healthy, safe and clean. We all do. Um, it would be stupid for us not to. So hopefully we'll get there someday, uh, sooner rather than later, because hopefully we're not regretting our decisions and then having to put ketchup. It's a lot harder to do that, so. That's all I have. Everything else on our side of the county's great as always, so.
Commissioner Henry, Commissioner Carlson.
Oh, okay, and as we said earlier, I went to the New Mexico counties, uh, meeting in Los Cruces this past weekend. I thought was, one of the things that I thought was very good was whenever they were talking. Some of the commissioners from up north were talking, and they were talking about, uh, the fact. That there was only six counties in the whole state that gave more to, uh, the state than they got back. And I know that had to have come directly from our arrowhead study, there's no other place that could've came from. And so I thought, hey, they are taking notice to that. And along that line, I thought, hey, you know, maybe we're kinda missing the boat in. We've got the, the president-elect of the New Mexico counties right here. And there are some county commissions that we can't get on their agenda because of political reasons. But, uh, every, every county in, in the state of New Mexico is represented at the New Mexico counties. And they do presentations, I mean, Lee County was doing a presentation over there about their new vocational school. That they have implemented in, in Hobbs, and I thought, what a neat idea. We've gotten captured at the New Mexico counties, and we need to present our updated, uh, arrowhead study. Uh, at that deal where we would have all thirty-three commissioners from all thirty-three counties. You know, that, I mean, what a great place, and so I thought, you know, we need to take advantage of that. On another note, uh, my daughter also run at the pro rodeo over in, uh, Los Cruces this weekend. And, uh, one second, so that's, that's not bad with the type of competition you run at, run against over at the pro rodeos. And so, that's all.
I'd like to build a little bit on, uh, climate change. Being one of the old guys in there, I can remember back in the seventies when the doom and gloom crowd was all about the coming ice age. Uh, that didn't work out so good. So we're along a couple of decades in this global warming. Uh, the data didn't support that, now it's climate change. And I agree, the climate is changing. It has been changing ever since North and South America were settled. By Eskimos coming across the frozen barrier between Siberia and Alaska. Where were we around when that melted? You know, that's. That's my take on climate change, not consistent. Education. At one time, we were forty-ninth in education, there's a lot of talk about it now. Mississippi didn't get any better, we got bumped down to fiftieth. Now we're not even fiftieth, since I started counting Washington DC, we are fifty-first in the nation in education. That's pitiful, so. If the regime in Santa Fe wants to make a big deal about education, that needs to be hammered on across the board.
One of the things that I thought interesting along that line was the fact that they brought up, we're like sixth in spending for education. In the nation, and, and fifty-first in results, you know, there's something wrong with that equation.
You'd get fired for that if you were in a private industry. CEO or not.
You can all fire him in November?
There you go.
I guess it's up to everybody.
Go vote.
I feel kinda out of step, I didn't bring my climate change book I was gonna talk about a couple of weeks ago, so I'm like, okay, well. Everybody took care of climate change for me, I guess I'll, I'll get on that bandwagon. But ju- just really one thing to announce, um, uh. All of the churches in, in Carlsbad have been invited to, to participate in a community faith night. And so, um, each one of your churches has been reached out to, and if, if for some reason we have missed a church, do apologize, you are still invited. But what it's gonna be is a Wednesday night activity, it's gonna be at the courthouse lawn, uh, Main Street's blocked off, it's gonna be really good. We've got catering and a lot of games, and then, uh, Brayden Ryan from F U M C is gonna do about a fifteen-minute worship service there. So we wanna invite all the churches, all the youth, you know, ages roughly twelve to eighteen, something like that, to come and participate. The sheriff's committed to send some, um, you know, send an officer or two, to help us out, I believe the city's doing the same thing. So just wanna, you know, think, things, things are pretty tough, and there's a lot of, uh. There may be different doctrines and a few different beliefs, but, um, the, the focus of this community faith night just needs to be Jesus Christ. And that's what, and that's what we're gonna focus on, so. Focus on him and, and doing what, what he's asked us to do, and we can be better people, and that's the, that's the whole focus. So we're gonna leave everything else aside, and would like to, uh, just invite everybody who wants to come and participate. Parents are welcome to come with your kids, like I said, a lot of good foods, no combs, games, a lot of things like that, so. We'd just like to, like to invite everybody and hope everybody can come and do that, and that is October the twelfth. From, uh, six to eight thirty PM down here at the courthouse, so. I guess with that, we're all done, huh?
Yep, we don't have an executive session, so that concludes our business for this commission meeting today. Thank you, commissioners.